Commissioners, to make the right decisions. We ask that you aid our staff as they perform the daily tasks of running our township, and we request that you be by our first responders as they protect our residents and see that they return home safe at the end of each day. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Commissioners, you received in your packets the minutes from our prior meeting, and if there are any questions, comments, or changes to be made, now is the time to make them. Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2019, meeting.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
For the record, I abstained from voting because I was not here at the meeting.
For the record, Commissioner Young is abstaining from the vote on the minutes. Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero, one abstention. Tonight, we have some employee recognitions for longevity in the township, and are any of those employees here tonight? Lori? Why don't you come up, Lori, and we'll... And also, just, is Mr. Kramer here tonight?
No. First for me to do one. So this is made out to Lori, and signed by our President Ed, who's not here tonight. And it said, Dear Lori, this correspondence is written as a commendation letter for your years of service to Lower Allen Township. Over your tenure at Lower Allen, you've grown in responsibility and tasks as a record clerk within the police department. Your commitment and dedication have not gone unnoticed. It is with great pleasure that I issue you this commendation letter honoring your ten years of service to Lower Allen Township. This is really signed by our President Ed Black.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
We have another commendation letter tonight that I'll just read, even though the person is not here. It's one of our patrol officers in our police department, and it's to Officer Kevin Kramer. This correspondence is written as a commendation letter for your years of service to Lower Allen Township. Over your tenure at Lower Allen, you've grown in responsibility and tasks as a patrol officer within the police department. Your commitment and dedication have not gone unnoticed. It is with great pleasure that I issue you this commendation letter honoring your five years of service to Lower Allen Township. Signed, Ed Black. Okay, so tonight, number five on our agenda, we have the honor of hearing a presentation from a study that was done with some residents and other stakeholders regarding a pedestrian and bicycle plan. And I'm not sure, Erin, who's starting this presentation off? Is it you, Dan?
I'll start it very briefly. This is the result of a study done by a committee of citizens, residents, and even some other interested parties that were part of the committee during the past eight or nine months. There were two grants involved to fund that. The consulting firm Simone Collins assisted us with that and put together the plan, and Greg Carrery from Simone Collins is here to present the plan to the commissioners tonight.
Thanks, Dan. Stan Hussein, I'm with Simone Collins, Jeff Carrery. We were hired as the consultants for the bicycle pedestrian study for Lower Allen Township. It's a lot to go over, so I'm going to go over real quick, and then we can have discussion afterwards. One of the first things we did was the site reconnaissance. We came over a couple times and looked at the entire township by foot, by bike, by car, different times of the day, really to inventory what was going on, to really, you know, see what's happening within the township. Another thing that we did was inventory the existing sidewalk infrastructure. It's one of the most basic, but yet it's the best backbone within, you know, the project, is to see where all the sidewalks were and see where the gaps were lying. We had a series of committee meetings that were really effective. We had just a very dedicated bunch of people that were really interested in the project and helped us develop it and really showed the detail that helped this project become really a quality one that it is. One of the funny things that we got to do, which I always laugh at, is we get to go out and we get to ride, and while riding, we get to see the entire township differently. But by doing so, we can actually invite others to experience it and get their input. We had a mother who was bringing around their child. We had township staff. We had other bicycle advocates that were showing us great shortcuts. So it was a really good, effective way to, you know, do the inventory. The final report was done recently, submitted to the township. One of the big things out of this was the improvement plan. The improvement plan is a lot of detail, and there's a lot of information there that has so many points, hundreds of points, in different improvements. So what we did is we took a closer look at it. We looked at things such as sidewalks, crosswalks, special crossings, hand man. Hand man is a term that is used by PennDOT. It's those crosswalk signs where you see the hand, you know, it's put up saying that, no, you shouldn't walk, and then the countdown timers that make it safe. Other things, such as the rapid flashing beacon, the pedestrian refuge island, bike box, and bump outs, were in there. Painted shoulders, multi-use trails, we looked at. Shareer routes, bicycle lanes, and speed reduction, and connections to other municipalities. It's really important to not stop at the township boundary. We always go past that scope because we know that we're going to want to make connections into the other ones, and really treat it as a transportation network. So one of the toughest things to do is to come up with a priorities list. Simone Collins put our list together, and what we saw, what would be easy to do, or what is needed. Then we ran it through the township, and then we took it to the committee, and everyone came together, and we were finally able to come up with some of the priorities. So one of the ways we did it, we took it and we broke it up into years, and these are the short-term priorities that we were looking at, one to two, three years, that would be nice to turn around. One of them is the bike lane on Eighteenth Street. Eighteenth Street is a sea of asphalt. It's really wide, and it's just, it's open and ripened for its speed. You just really want to go quickly, but what we want to do is utilize the extra space and put in a bike lane there. Another one, really simple, crosswalks and curb cuts. They need to be implemented. You see this happening every day, every construction project, every township, is just slowly but surely implementing them. They are important and really do happen over time. Another one, sidewalks. This Google Street View, you can go onto Google and you see this happen time and time again. You see residents walking in the street where there aren't sidewalks. Even though there was a sidewalk on the other side of the road, she stayed in the side of the street there. Tends to be unsafe. Then we started looking at the midterm priorities. Four to 10 years, guesstimate in there, of what we were starting to look at. Some of them were rapid flashing beacons. The township has effectively started to implement these. They're very effective, they're very easy to use, and it takes a while for certain people to learn, but that education has already happened because of successful installations at the schools in the area. Speed reduction. Arcona is transforming. I was here 12 years ago, and I was down in Arcona. It was very rural. There are lots of ag fields, and it was a different look, it was a different feel. Now that you're down there today, we are seeing quick development. We're seeing a lot more traffic in there, and we start looking at what's going to happen with those roads. We looked at it and said, well, if there's going to be more people there, the speeds really should be brought down because some of the site distances aren't that great, and we know that there are going to be lots of people on that road using, you know, for jogging and for running. The shareo. The shareo is a device that lets drivers know that they are going to see lots of bicyclists. It's a route. It's very cost-effective, painting on there, saying that this is a designated route that we would like to have bicyclists use as transportation or exercise. The long-term priorities. This is 10-plus. These tend to be the big-ticket items, and we had some really big-ticket items in here, but some that really felt that could be done. This is a really good example of a long-term project. This land, that's owned by DGS, has sat there and has looked the same for many, many years. We don't know if there are any plans. There could be, but what if we could possibly get a multi-use trail along the backside of that property? It would be great because multi-use trails allow all user types to go out there and enjoy them, so you can get the children out there, you can get the inexperienced riders, or the people who just want to go out for a jog and not have to worry about crossing roads. You could get a fair amount of distance up in that property. Another one, the pedestrian bridge. We worked on the Camp Hill Ped-Walk Study, and everyone agreed getting to the south was very, very difficult. Getting across the bridge was a pinch point. No one knew how to really do that, other than redoing the bridge. It wasn't, it didn't occur to us, well, we actually sat in the township and studied what was going on, that maybe, potentially, we could put a bridge across the street, over Eighteenth Street, into Camp Hill. We looked at it, and there is enough space. There is one property in there, the railroad tracks are low enough, so it is a big-ticket item, but the safety that would happen because of this, it's too good to not, you know, to look at. Another one, the tunnels. We know that there has been a history of the tunnels with the railroads. The railroads, no matter where we are in Pennsylvania, always had these narrow underpasses through them. It's very difficult to widen those abutments. It's the amount of work that has to be done, the coordination, is tremendous. So now, in Pennsylvania, you start seeing a lot of these tunnels. These two tunnels that you see on the left are happening in southeast Pennsylvania and have been implemented along Amtrak lines and the Septa lines, and with the boring technologies, it has become easier for it to happen. It's still expensive, but when it comes to safety, expense really levels out. So that was the quick presentation. I'm now going to take lots of questions, however I can answer them, if anyone wants to know.
Commissioners, do you have any questions right now?
Yeah, you talk about going through the tunnels on the railroad tracks. How do you get Norfolk Southern to allow you to do that?
It's always the difficult process. It used to be, many years ago, you could sit down, calm up, and they would actually talk to you. Now that the railroads are back full force from the gas boom, it's very, very tough. So you have to...
You had to say, I don't foresee them letting you do it.
Yes, it can be, it can be a tough process, and it actually becomes a political process where you have to go to legislators to really have them, you know, bring them to the table and sit down. Often, when it becomes an accident and something tragic happens, then they can often listen, but it's a, it's a dance that has to happen.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from our commissioners?
Ed?
Carolyn asked the one that was foremost in my mind. We've been working several years, we've worked with PennDOT or the railroad, not PennDOT, about the tunnel out here, and it just, you said, get the legislators involved. They literally laughed at them when we got them involved, so...
Yeah, we have seen some just stop, and we have seen others go through. It's a weird process. I really don't know how some people have successfully pushed the tunnels through and others have not, but they are being built. It's one of these situations where I would probably go to another township and see how they started the process, because Norfolk Southern, they are notorious for being difficult.
Well, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and that is, I was very impressed with the, I started out on the committee and realized that when we went around introducing each other, and one person said, I rode my bike about 1,000 miles last year, and I wrote, and I said, remember, I own a bike, okay? So I realized I was not the best person to probably be on that committee, but it was a very dedicated group, and it's very obvious that the work you all did.
Yes, I honestly could go on for 15 minutes with the committee. It was a really diverse committee, and a lot of people owed a lot of gratitude for picking them out and really helping us, because without those people, we couldn't have made a good product.
Right, right. Everybody's input was obviously important.
Oh, it was incredible.
Down by Arcona, so, I mean, I mean, that's building out, and, you know, they, they're saying they're going to have 10-plus miles or so of trails.
Yes.
Around the area there. I'm still trying to figure out how that's going to work. I guess it's kind of like our intestines, you just can't figure out how many miles of it we have, right? I mean, I'm still not sure how that's going to work out, but was there discussion during this with those folks? Because I know, I mean, that essentially is going to be a neighborhood association, and there might be some restrictions, right?
I don't know what the restrictions are going to be, if it's an HOA situation. We did look at their trails, and we did want to connect to them.
Right.
Because even though if they don't want people going in, we definitely want people to come out of them and connect to the neighborhoods. I know that there are some pretty big trails that are going to be implemented, and it'd be a shame to see those be private.
Right. And then the other question I had is regarding the Eighteenth Street Bridge.
Yes.
Item there. When you say that's a big-ticket item, I mean, is that something that we would probably have to work with? I mean, obviously, work with Camp Hill, right?
Yes.
With, right? And that would get us, that project, even though it's big, you know, and that, it would get us to, if it ever happened, basically to Camp Hill, the borough.
Yeah, it definitely would.
I mean, so like, if you wanted to take your bike, or whatever, you can get over to the West Shore Farmer's Market, I would imagine, and all that, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things, there are lots of grants out there, and the money's there, and when you have a multiple, you know, township grant, getting together, connecting, and for a situation like this, where two studies have acknowledged there is a pinch point, PennDOT acknowledging there's a pinch point, it's ripe for a grant.
Right. Does the public have any comment or have any questions? Now would be a good time on this. Anybody?
Where the railroad, you mean, the railroad bridge? Yeah. I talked to the neighbors once before about, you know, some alternative, and the whole thing with the Norfolk Southern came up at that point. We said there was like a creek bridge over here, you were looking at, for that seven trail beside that.
Yeah, we had asked when we developed Cedar Run, Cedar Spring Run Park, to put a pedestrian trail underneath the bridge, and we paid for some engineering with their Atlanta Engineering Division. They gave us the go-ahead, but Harris, the Pennsylvania office somehow, for some reason, decided they didn't want it, so it didn't go anywhere.
As I understand it, we cited all kinds of safety issues, because there are people who are crossing the tracks, wherever they feel like crossing the tracks, you know, all the things we tried to, to help and avoid. Oh, well, it was an oh-well moment.
I had to come to a dead spot going under this underpass because pedestrians coming through, and there's some places you can go with all kind of traffic, there's a dead traffic.
Sir, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
I'm David Knox, and I'm here on, you know, I'm trying to see what's going on.
Also, if anybody would like to make a comment, I'd have to ask you to come up to the podium so the sound system picks you up.
Come on up, Michelle.
Hi, good evening. Michelle Tarquino, I had the opportunity to participate, I believe only one or two, just for time constraints, but I believe in a study such as this for bicycle and pedestrians. It's helpful, and I think you had the opportunity to update it in some points, but for the benefit of the township and the commissioners participating, maintenance cost and potential cost upfront, I think it's of value, and I know that Simone Collins had the opportunity to update recently the Camp Hill one, so it was of value to them and surrounding municipalities, so they could see potential for grant opportunities that would be forthcoming and working with tri-county planning. So I'm not sure in the final report if you had the opportunity to do so. I know there were some edits last month or two, Erin, that they had the opportunity to make some changes, but for your sake and moving forward, should you want to pursue grant funding, and then the maintenance costs associated with them, for the priorities, they laid out the tables, but to answer some of your questions, I know about the, working with Norfolk Southern and moving forward, you know, it would be a longer-term improvement. I know they push it down in priority, but whatever you choose to move forward with in the future, and Arcona, too, should a pavement project be pursued in the future to widen the shoulders. I know we did talk about that in the draft final and moving that forward, too.
And you're talking about residual costs, and just understanding what it's going to cost to take care of what we maybe develop in this, down the road, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Absolutely. Whether it be the implementation, and then the maintenance costs thereafter, so if it would be a bridge to Camp Hill, then who's going to own and maintain that in moving forward, so... It might help the board then in moving forward with their decision-making and prioritizing what they want to move forward with, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Erin, I, I mean, I'm not sure, I don't want to put you on the spot, but where do we go from here? I mean, I was part of some of these meetings, these committee meetings, and they were great, I thought, and then I thought those, well, it's probably one of the best participation that I've seen so far since I've been involved in the township with regard to the public and the quantity, and the amount of people getting involved in a process, and so where does, where do we go?
So after tonight, when you see this presentation, we'll bring it back for adoption at your next meeting, if you would approve of it, and then we had reached out to the county. We had a county liaison who specializes in trails and greenways, and since we had, our committee actually expressed a desire to carry on the mission, and they wanted to continue meeting, and they asked kind of the same thing, what is next? And we asked if they would kind of help collaborate on multi-jurisdictional effort. The, I think the biggest preference of the whole committee was the Eighteenth Street Bridge. That one got a lot of focus because at one of our first meetings, one of the first things we heard about destinations that people wanted to go to was the market in the West Shore Market, or they wanted to be able to go to Frederickson Library. So the idea to be able to get over to Camp Hill was really appealing to them, and like Jeff had expressed, Camp Hill had similar desires to come to Lower Allen, and then with Lemoine, kind of redoing some of their shopping center, and New Cumberland kind of meets right there, too. There's a lot of points there that all come together, so the thought was maybe bringing everyone together to kind of work and focus on that project, and the county expressed some interest in that, and our committee asked if we'd be willing to lend them this space to meet, and we were presumptuous and said sure.
Okay, so I'm going to understand that our next, I mean, the next time we'll see this would be when we adopt it, when we adopt what the committee has basically agreed that they wanted to move forward with.
Yes.
I got you.
And then I think the other item that we thought is, we really want to make our plan flexible, which is why you see there is a lot in it, so that way, when funding sources become available, you know, sometimes there's different criteria for the funding source, so then if we can tailor a project to that funding criteria, we at least have a plan that we can point back to that said, this was discussed, and this is something we're interested in, so that was important to us, too.
Okay.
I do have a question. If a resident wanted to come and view this, will there be copies here at the township that they can come and review?
No, we can print it out and have it there, and also, we'll make it available on the township website.
Great. That was my next question. I didn't know how much, that'd probably be easier than having it like this.
One of the meetings that I was in, it was brought up to maybe at some point, you know, I know that we had our issues with Norfolk Southern, and, you know, in the last go-around, I think it was like 2016 or so, or 15 or 16, is maybe revisit and open up a dialogue with them again. I mean, people change, and, you know, and I don't mean their attitude will change, I'm saying the people that are there, and the management and stuff, and I think that maybe be a good time to at least say, hey, look, where do you really stand on this stuff now? I mean, last time, it sounds like they dragged us through a lot to get from point A to point B, and it did nothing, and maybe now would be a good time. I just suggested, I don't know if that would be part of our plan here, to maybe just open up that dialogue.
We kept that as an item in our plan. I think if we were directed as staff, we would go that direction and make it a priority, but I feel like our war wounds are a little fresh.
I understand, but, you know, time passes and people, things change, so...
Any other questions on this topic? Okay, hearing none, I think we're just going to move on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your work. We have another presentation tonight by the chairman of our county commissioners in Cumberland County, Vince DeFilippa is here tonight. Welcome, Vince.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for having me, Commissioner's staff, residents of Lower Allen Township. One of the job duties as a county commissioner is I like to get out to some of the municipalities and boroughs and just give a quick update on what's going on in the county, take a couple of minutes, be happy to take any questions, and then I'll be on my way. Voting machines, as you probably know, we are, the counties are now mandated to have certain voting machines now that produce a paper ballot. Cumberland County is purchasing some new voting machines, and will have them in place for the 2020 primary election. There was a petition filed not too long ago by a group of people claiming that the machines that the state had recently certified were not safe, and, but anyway, that petition was reviewed again, and the state has come back stating that the machines that we are purchasing are certified, so we are proceeding as planned. Census 2020, the county has initiated a three-part media campaign to keep folks aware of the upcoming census. In fact, tomorrow night, it's going to be a topic of discussion at our municipality advisory board meeting, which we have about three times a year. I see that the Lower Allen Township will be represented by Commissioner Valone tomorrow night. Thank you for coming out, sir. Just some more updates on voting. You can now apply online for absentee ballots. Regarding electronic cycling, the county put a program in, a little... There was a petition filed not too long ago by a group of people claiming that the machines that the state had recently certified were not safe and, but anyway, that petition was reviewed again and the state has come back stating that the machines that we are purchasing are certified. So, we are proceeding as planned. Census 2020, the county has initiated a three-part media campaign to keep folks aware of the upcoming census. In fact, tomorrow night, it's going to be a topic of discussion at our municipality advisory board meeting, which we have about three times a year. I see that the Lower Allen Township will be represented by Commissioner Valone tomorrow night. Thank you for coming out, sir. Just some more updates on voting, you can now apply online for absentee ballots. Regarding electronic cycling, the county put a program in a little over two years ago and right now, we have collected almost 850 pounds of electronics, TVs, old computers, et cetera, and have been recycled. Hazardous waste collection, this year, the county had three such events. The last one was September 19th. All of them were quite successful in the past. We've only had one event for subsequent years. Well, we will at least have three per year. Regarding the opioid epidemic, the trends dropped from 2018, from 2018 drop during, excuse me, the trends in 2018 dropped from 2017, the number of deaths from opioid abuse. And what we're seeing so far in '29, the trend is continuing to get lower and this is a good thing, we think. And that's due to a lot of reasons, mainly a lot of education, also the fact that doctors are prescribing opioids less. And the county initiated an opioid epidemic court in 2018 and we are seeing some positive results from that court. People are getting in treatment sooner and they're staying out of jail because we've also seen our jail population drop about 20 percent. This Thursday, we're having a farmland preservation celebration at the Paulus Farm in Upper Allen Township. The county, along with the state and its program, mutual program, we have reached the 20,000 acre mark of preserved prime farmland. Should be a pretty big event. We know that Russell Redding, the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture will be there. And regarding agriculture, our county ag board, we have an opening. If anyone is interested or if you know anyone that might be interested, the deadline is September 30th and they need to contact the county planning department. Regarding our public safety department, the county can now take text messages in our 911 center. So, if you can't call, you can text and we think that's a pretty big improvement to how it has been. And Commissioner Valone, that's all I have right now. Be happy to take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, commissioners? Anybody in the public have any questions for Commissioner DeFilippa? Thanks Vince for all your hard work.
Well, thank you, folks. Same to you for doing what you do and keeping your township running well. So, I thank you as well.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Okay, on, on our agendas, we, we would normally go to number seven and we'll get there in just a second. We're going to be adding in between six and seven here, another presentation that is, is coming to the township and it's actually been coming to the township once a year. And Dawson Flinchball is here from Flinchies, who's to make a presentation. And I understand Dawson, this is another result, an annual result of Flinchies Flinchypalooza that has been a big success.
People seem to love our chili.
What's that?
People seem to love the chili.
They do love the chili, so.
Yeah, anyway, as everybody knows, we do the annual chili cook-off. We had like 50, 54 entries this year. The winners went to the world championship in Des Moines, Iowa. In fact, it was just last weekend. We have five different categories, red chili, green chili, home-style chili. We put, we put a vegetarian chili in this year and the first ever was a youth program. We allow children under 16 to try to bring, bring along a new generation of cooks and we were very successful in that. We actually made, actually the rules were that all the, to go to the world cook-off, you entered the youth contest, you qualified to go to the world, trying to really get people involved in it, so. And, and of course, it's a fundraiser. We've been raising money since, since you started the Police Dollar for Rocco and we raised money for Rocco and ever since then, it's been for the Lower Allen Township, is this right, police departments, youth program?
Yep.
Youth programs, right.
The youth fund and the K-9 program. We thank you for that.
Right, right. So, with that being said, this, this check that I have tonight was the first, first check off the, off the sheet from the chili cook-off was from Sun Motor Cars, compliments of Dan Sullivan. He donated $25, $2,500 to the cook-off, $1,500 of it went someplace else through one of, some other charity, which filtered down to you guys. And I have a check here tonight for $1,018 for, to get things started this year.
Thank you very much. We thank you, Dawson.
Thanks to Dan Sullivan and Sun Motor Cars.
And Dawson, also, you need the recognition, I mean, like today, I was at a meeting here in the building and Dawson provided snacks from Flinchies for us and, and that's the kind of business that they are here in Lower Allen Township. They set a pretty high standard for, for being good, a good business here for the township. So, thank you so much for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
This is the, the part in our agenda where we have audience participation on any item on our agenda. So, if you have, you are here to talk about or make comment about any item that's currently on the agenda, make it known now. And what, what we'll do is when we get to that item, we'll have you come up. What item are you here to talk about, sir?
If it's not on the agenda per se.
There. Okay, so we, there's another point in the agenda here that you'll be able to make comment on that issue and it'll just be shortly down the road here. Is there any, anybody else in, that would like to participate tonight regarding any item on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Oh, yes, what number, ma'am?
11C.
11C, you got it. So, when that comes up, we'll have you come up to the podium and, and you'll just announce your name and your address and you betcha. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any commissioner, staff member, or anyone else in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion can request it now. Is there a request for the removal of any item on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll be looking for a motion on two items on the consent agenda. A is our department reports for the month of August for community development, fleet maintenance, township engineer, public works and public safety and B, tax collectors' August report.
Mr. Vice President, I move that we accept the items on the consent agenda which are listed as you mentioned.
I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Under the Vice President, I have 9A, which is a, I'm looking for a motion to approve the check register of September 13th, 2019 in the amount of $385,173 and 31 cents.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. 9B, motion to adopt resolution 2019-R-38, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township. Cumberland County, Pennsylvania authorizing the sale of township property valued over $2,000. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second and I just have a question. This is regarding the tractor, right?
Yes, this is the 1996 New Holland tractor.
Okay, and I'm just curious, what, what, what do we anticipate the value we would get for that is, that we budgeted for?
I, I don't remember what we put that in, in the budget as.
It wasn't in the budget.
Oh, this is a.
So, so there's no official number for you tonight.
Oh, it was just, this would be, whatever we get, the proceeds from this just winds up as extra?
Yeah, things that are replaced are in the, the five-year capital plan and there's usually a replacement val, or a sale value for the old equipment. This one is a little bit different. It did not have a replacement, so there was nothing put into the budget for the sale.
Okay. I think it's pretty phenomenal that we're talking about a 1996 New Holland tractor that we've kept running well all this time. So, kudos to the staff.
This, this item, the reason it wasn't intended, what's, it has not been replaced with anything. It was a, it was a machine that was being underused and the public works folks adapted a different machine to do this job. So, it was a surplus piece of equipment, which is why we're getting rid of it. Usually the things we put on, on the budget as far as disposition are things that we're replacing. So, we really didn't anticipate getting rid of this, it's just an idea that they came up with mid-year.
Call for a question?
We have a motion and a second on 9B regarding the resolution. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And then 9C, a motion to adopt resolution 2019-R-39 approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R.19823 into Lower Allen Township. And just for a point of reference, this is the, here, this is regarding the hearing that we had just prior to this meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Okay, and at this time, number 10 is where any business is pertinent to the township. Discussion is generally limited to about 15 minutes and what you'll do, sir, is just come up to the podium, announce your name and your address again and let us know what you have in mind.
My name is Darren Cox. I'm at 2002 Wentworth Drive. Rise and protest tonight to the recently enacted ordinance 2019-02 regarding the parking of recreational vehicles in the township. While I can easily see the grounds for restricting the parking of such vehicles on public streets, I cannot see the grounds for restricting parking of private, on private property in residential zones. If such vehicles are properly licensed, inspected, insured and do not interfere with public right-ofways, I see no public health or safety basis for restricting their storage on the owner's property regardless of length. Some on the board will respond that this chain does not affect me at this time because my motor home is less than 30 feet. The township manager can say that it doesn't affect me because of the grandfathering of units that were purchased or in place prior to March 24, 2019. Neither of these address the perceived direction I believe this ordinance is taking. It is, if it is acceptable to the board to pass a parking ordinance barring certain RVs with no discernible basis in public health or safety, I see nothing to prevent the board from barring all RVs from being parked on private property in Lower Allen Township going forward. In closing, I ask the board to strike from the ordinance 2019-02, the language of 30 feet or less in overall length in section 209, 29 dot 13, paragraph A. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, sir. Does the commissioners have any questions or comments?
Okay, what are you asking us to do?
Just remove the length restriction and just allow RVs in general to be parked on the public, on private property.
Do you have an RV?
I do.
And you have parked on the street?
I do not. It has been in my driveway for years.
It's in your driveway?
Yes, but as I said, this does not directly affect me. It's more of an issue of where I fear this is going.
Okay, but if it's in your driveway, it doesn't, we don't have restrictions for being in the driveway, do we?
Well, yeah, we do, actually. What Mr. Cox is referring to is if, if, if an RV is 30 feet or less in length, it may be parked in a driveway, on a side yard, on a, on a crew pad or a backyard on a crew pad. However, if the, which is, Vince, it's 25 feet, he's fine. What he's objecting to is in general, a restriction on any RV being parked on private property. So, he's, what he's suggesting is that you remove the length restriction so that any RV of any length may park in a driveway or on an approved pad in a side or rear yard. So, it's, because right now, our ordinance does not allow RVs of over 30 feet to be on the property for longer than 72 hours.
With the obvious provision that they be properly maintained, i.e. they're registered, they're insured, they're inspected, they're not blocking anybody's sightlines or right-ofways.
Any other questions?
Looks like Commissioner Holtzman has a question.
Commissioner Holtzman?
I thought if we should, they were on a pad, they were allowed to be on the property?
Not if they're in excess of 30 feet. This was discussed at some length prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
I would add that RVs in excess of 30 feet are very, very expensive items and it would greatly surprise me if someone who had put that kind of investment into a vehicle would allow it to deteriorate and become a hazard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How lo, how, how long is yours?
Mine's 25.
Yours is 25 feet.
Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda, number 11 is under the township engineer.
Okay, good evening. 11A is, look at the preliminary street paving list for next year's paving project. We do contract every other year, something that was a little different this year because of the gas line installation in the manner at Fair Oaks. We had hoped to do a small paving project to finish that neighborhood up and went out to bid and received no bids. We're not exactly sure of the reason of that and UGI is just about finishing up their work now, getting the mains installed, so there's a pretty short window at the end of the season. So, we're just going to add those streets into the contract for next year. So, the list that you have there would be those streets in Fair Oaks. There's a number of streets in Cedar Cliff Manor. These are the ones that have not been paved within the last 12 or 15 years. Some of the others have been done. And then the final street there, Gettysburg Road, once the relocation project is complete, there will be a, a short section in between that project and the Upper Allen Township line, which would be, which would need resurfacing because it needs it now and that would be left as a gap, so we want to be prepared to have that gap filled shortly after the relocation project is completed. We'd like to get the list at least with temporary approval the year before we pave so we can get notice out to all the utilities so that they can plan for any work that they may have to do ahead of our paving.
Right, it's my understanding that, that the, the list, if we adopt it, is just, to adopt it so you can kind of move forward with things and then we would wind up with budget numbers that we would either approve certain things on the list or not, correct?
Yeah, this, and this comes under the liquid fuels budget, so it's not part of the, the general fund. This does not obligate you to pave the streets. You know, if we have catastrophic winter or something else that throws the liquid fuels budget way out of alignment, this list can always be changed.
Okay. It's just an idea of what we want to shoot for.
Yes, barring any unforeseen circumstances between now and then.
Well, Mr. Vice President, if we're looking for action on this tonight?
I, I think we should if, I have no objection to any of it unless any of the other commissioners do.
I move then that we approve the preliminary street paving list for the 2020 street paving project. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary street paving list for the 2020 street paving project as presented in our packets. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next in.
Okay, item B is the, the first payment request for the Lisburn-Rossmoyn Roundabout. Pennsy Supplies, the contractor, they have submitted this request for payment. This is, as expected, because of the size of the, the payment, it comes to the Board of Commissioners for approval and action.
And after your review of this, you don't see any reason why we would delay this, correct?
Correct.
Commissioners, I'd be looking for a motion tonight if we could to get this payment approved.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the issue regarding payment number one to Pennsy Supply in the amount of $181,588 for the Lisburn-Rosmoyn Road Roundabout Project. All those in favor? in the amount of $181,588 for the Lisburn-Rosmoyn Road Roundabout Project. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We are at 11C. Why don't you go ahead, Dan, and then we'll have our resident come up and make comment.
As you know, we received a land development plan for development of a sheet store, Cedar Cliff Drive. After the plan was submitted, they sort of took a step back and are doing, did some public outreach through meetings and websites and some other things. And they're in the process now of still receiving that information, but also responding to it and changing their plans accordingly. And they do have, and may still have some issues to take to the zoning hearing board with requests. So, the 90-day deadline from the municipality's planning code will most likely expire by the time, because the clock is running now, once this plan was submitted. So, they have offered a 60-day extension to that, which would put a new deadline at January 17th of 2020. So, the, if you so desire, the action by the board would just be to accept that 60-day extension that they have offered.
Does the board have any questions? Comments to the engineer? Ma'am, would you like to come up and talk about this?
If you don't mind, we'll just need your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Melissa McNeil. I live at 401 Black Latch Lane. I am one of the residents that started the information concerning, the Facebook page, Information Concerning the Cedar Cliff Sheets. And I'm getting a lot of questions from concerned citizens. And I was just going to bring a few of them here, just to get a little clarification if we can. But first, I would like to thank you for everything you do for our township and trying to make it better. But some of our concerns for this, is there going to be a new traffic input study completed? Is that, I know, or updated? Or, that was some questions that were brought forward.
Yes.
There is going to be one?
Yes.
And will that, so, are they going to refer back to the other plan as well? The one that they did conduct in May, on May 30th, and compare that, or?
Well, it will be a revision to that study.
Okay. And is the township asking for a pedestrian study to be completed for that area?
That's part of the traffic study.
That, I thought that was a separate entity?
No.
No? Okay. I'm sorry, I was led to believe that was. And I know, did the plan address anything about the football traffic, sporting events, all of those things with all the traffic that goes through there?
All the traffic there will be addressed in, in the traffic study.
Okay, will they take that into consideration, the nighttime events that will occur? Because I know the traffic study was generally just during the day, when they, when I was reading the study. And I know they're projecting what things would be over the 24-hour span. But does that take into account those things, or? That's, these are questions that have been asked by people, and I'm not sure.
It may, if there are events that are out of the ordinary, they, there are specific guidelines, primarily from PennDOT, on how the traffic studies are conducted, and they'll address all those points.
Okay. Is there any consideration being made to put some streetlights along Cedar Cliff Drive? Not just at the intersection, but along that dark stretch past the, before the homes by the school? The stretch of where the commercial buildings are?
I've not heard of any plan to do that.
Okay. Is that some, oh, I'm sorry.
If I, yeah, let me answer that. Streetlights are owned by PP&L. They will, and the township has an ordinance which, which collects, we, we collect fees for that. So, if there are streetlights desired there, it takes a petition to, so what we do is we just, we petition the households that would be affected by the fee, that would receive the fee. I think it's within 300 feet of a streetlight. I think it's the right number. And get all those folks to sign off. And if so, then we ask PP&L to go ahead and install the streetlights. So, it's kind of a separate process.
Oh, okay. And who's, who, who keeps those, maintenance on those? Is, is it PP&L that?
It's PP&L, yeah.
And what happens when there are lights that are out? How long does it take them to replace? Because people have questioned, there's apparently been a light out at Cedar Cliff Drive and Carlisle Road for a long time, and it hadn't seen.
They, they don't, they really require, they, they rely on people to report them. I don't know that they have people driving around looking for lights out.
I understand, yeah.
So, quickly, if somebody, I just got, got a call today, in fact, from a resident. I don't know how long it's been out, but I know that they're pretty quick on repairing it once they know it's out.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, if we, if, if you notice the lights out and you let me know, or you can actually call them directly. They have a line that you can call and give them the pole number. Sometimes you don't have to give them the pole number. You just give them the address and they, they can come out and take, they take care of it pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you. And just one other thing. I'm a mom, and I'm just making a plea to you before the sheets comes up in the agenda and the forthcoming, or the months coming up here. Please just go and hang out at that intersection between 7:15 and 8:15. I can tell you every day, there are 20 to 25 elementary school students walking there to get to Highland. And I know you're looking at maybe taking them along Cedar Cliff Drive, up through West Shore Drive or through Cedar Cliff Parking Lot. What happens on trash days? There are trashcans there. That sidewalk, the shoulder, there is a foot distance between the cars and the sidewalk. And that sidewalk is also narrow there. So, if they continue going out of Allendale, making a right onto Cedar Cliff, out by where the sheets will be, I'm just asking, imagine 20 to 25 children walking to school, in addition to how many high schoolers are walking home every day from New Cumberland, because this has a big impact on them. They have two miles from Cedar Cliff. All of their students walk. And they're teenagers. They make mistakes. Their judgment's not the greatest. There's lots of research on that. Just last week, I was driving, there were three kids hiding behind a telephone pole, waiting for their friend to pull out of the parking lot so they could run in front of him on Carlisle Road to make him slam on his brakes. And you can't fix that. And I understand that. That's their judgment. But if we put something in that's going to bring additional cars, 100 cars per hour, to that location, it's, it's just harmful for the kids that are walking through there.
So, I'm just curious. What are you suggesting then with sidewalks?
I know that they're planning the side, just if it goes in, just where the crosswalks will be, signage, anything like that. But I know that they're trying to maybe walk the walking train another way in coming out of Allendale and turning left onto Cedar Cliff Drive. And that is so narrow there. There are a lot of people asking that on Facebook as well. Why don't they just change the walking train's route? If you walk that, you wouldn't want, I walk my dog there every day, and I'm pulling him to the other side just because I don't want him to be hit by a car. And he's a puppy. But those are just the concerns we have. Just where, how are the kids going to get to school safely? And just the influx of sheets coming in.
Dan, just for my, or our education here, in a land development plan like this, do, does it consider the adjacent properties and walking, you know, like, let's say, across the street and things like that? When the plans come in, I mean, do they, they notate what's going on around the area? Or is it just only, when the plans come in, do they only identify what they have to do on their land?
The traffic impact study evaluates the impact of the development.
Including, including walking?
So, it starts with the base plan, things that are already there and happening, and then sees what their impact would be on that. And then any mitigation that would need to be done to lessen or eliminate the impact.
Including pedestrian?
Yeah, pedestrian traffic is part of traffic.
Okay, gotcha. I understand. Thank you.
I know Sheets is looking at also, the, in their plans, they were suggesting making that left turn from Cedar Cliff Drive out onto Carlisle Road, extending that into making a, a left turn lane, and then also a center turn lane for people coming down off of 83 and straight on the Cedar Cliff Drive to turn left into Sheets. There's, where do you, where will be the difference of a left turn for the people going this way and a left turn for the people coming this way? Those are just some concerns we have when looking at the plans. And I know they're a work in progress. We've been speaking with them as well. But those are just some things that we're just asking you to consider, please.
If I can follow on Mr. McNeil's comments, and of course, we appreciate their, their concerns and they're taking the time at the meeting. But just so the commissioners and the audience knows there's going to be, there'll be ample opportunities to bring these things up with Sheets here. They have to bring their plan before the Planning Commission first, and then, and that may be more than one meeting. Depends on how satisfied the Planning Commission is. But then following the Planning Commission, the plan will come before this Board of Commissioners. So, there'll be ample opportunity for, for folks who have these concerns to come and address them with the developer.
And do you know, will Sheets still want to meet with the Planning Committee before they would go to the zoning for the variances? Just looking at the dates and the next meetings.
Maybe Dan can answer this better. I don't, I don't know that it would profit anybody to go to the Planning Commission prior to the zoning.
That's what we were wondering.
Because without the variance, it's kind of not going anywhere. So, I don't know. Dan, do you?
I, I think that's the intention at this point.
Okay.
That they would go to the zoning hearing board first, and then bring the plan to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Which is one of the reasons they want the additional 60 days.
Right, because of the meetings before, again, that's, yeah. That's what we were just wondering, because people are wondering when meetings are, when they can attend. And we just don't want to bring all these people here and it not be addressed.
Yeah, I think we're already past the submission time for the October Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for sharing your concerns, yep. And thanks for your diligence on bringing this information forward, too. I mean, you know, a lot of times this stuff doesn't get to light, right? What you're bringing out, and we appreciate that. Yes, Michelle?
Two quick questions, no detail.
Absolutely.
Does anybody here from the Board of Commissioners plan to participate or attend in the zoning hearing board for Sheets in October? Just to hear what the residents might have to say.
I'm contemplating sitting out there. I would attempt it to be at the first one. I am. I'm contemplating being there. I'm, I'm struggling with it, though, because I don't want to have any sort of conflict of, of interest myself.
You can dress up in a costume.
But it is a, but it is a public meeting, so I'm thinking about it.
What do you mean by participate?
Just actually, I'm not participate to testify, but just to listen to what the residents might have to say.
I was planning to be at the Melissa.
Yeah, I was at the first one when it got continued, you know, just to see what people thought, even though I knew it was going to be continued.
Right.
And it, it perks some interest in me.
Okay. Anybody else?
You heard me.
Okay. The, the TIS, Dan, do, does the township have a date of when the updated TIS is going to be completed?
No.
No? Okay. Will that information be communicated by chance to residents, just out of curiosity? We might see them actually, actually out on, on the field, but?
The date for the TIS?
The date when TPD will be out there completing the updates for the, will they actually be out there surveying? Or is the language in the TIS going to be completed? Just for clarity.
I'm not sure exactly where they'll be doing the work, but they'll be revising the traffic impact study.
Okay. Are they actually out going out on the field to get updated counts? Or just updating the language in the report in the study?
I don't have that information here.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, back to the study.
Tag.
That was our question with the impact study was May 30th, because there weren't no fourth graders at Highland that day. And they were saying there were seven pedestrians that they saw walking to school that day. And so, that's where the numbers are conflicting, where we were wondering, why are the numbers so low? And we see so many kids that day. But there were issues, there weren't all the kids in school that day.
I can't believe they go out on one day and stand on a corner and say, "That's my study." I really can't.
We agree.
I would doubt it.
All right, thank you. So, there's a possible question tonight for action regarding accepting a 60-day time extension for rendering a decision on the docket number 2019-11 Sheets Incorporated, 1508 Cedar Cliff Drive, establishing a new deadline of January 17th, 2020. Commissioners, do I hear a motion to take action on this tonight?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to take action on the issue. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Number 12, you're up, Rick Finance.
Two items tonight. Both items relate to actuarial assumptions. These are used to forecast the long-term needs of the pension plans. However, they do have a impact on the budgets now. They will, are part of our actuarial valuations. These are conducted every two years with the most recent one to be dated January 1st, 2019. It will not impact the 2020 budget, but it will impact the 2021 budget. Every valuation has tweaks to these assumptions. For example, this, this valuation coming up as well as the last two before that had changes to the mortality table. Mortality table is used to forecast how long retirees will be drawing benefits. Usually, these do not require board action. But in this one case, the state auditor general prefers to see board action on it, and that is the five-year smoothing of assets. This was recommended by our actuary. Basically, what that does usually, this, this, the plan assets are basically the, the portfolio of investments. They're normally shown at market value. When they're smoothed over five years, it takes the change in those market values and just smoothes it out over five years. Like I said, this was thought of, actually, and recommended by our actuary. It was also recommended by our pension attorney, Randall Rhodes, as well as staff. So, that would be the first resolution. Are there any questions on that?
And I'll, I'll just throw in that we're not seeking action on these resolutions tonight unless the board wants to, wants to take them.
Can't take action right now. Can't take action.
No, 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 not right now. Well, you could. You have three out of five.
Shall we wait for Dean, do you think?
No, he said just continue on.
Okay, all right. The second item deals with the earnings assumption. That is an assumption of how much the portfolio will earn in the long term. It is the assumption that has the most impact on the budget. So, any change you make there is going to impact the budget. It was recommended by our pension attorney, Randall Rhodes, that we look at. Now, he didn't recommend we go one way or the other, but he recommended we look at reducing that assumption from 7.75% to 7.50%. That, you, you have my memo outlining what that does to the budget. It is a matter, really, the, the actuary also can support either rate. Staff is actually at the exact same position. We would be fine with either rate the board chooses. The reason it's being brought now is that we've, with the changes, assuming you do the change in, in the first resolution, that reduces our MMO, or the amount we have to budget, quite a bit, which is kind of an unusual year. It is an unusual that the pension obligation goes up quite a bit. So, you have a window of opportunity to do it now, if you so choose. Also, it will not, at this time, if it's done now, will not adversely ask or impact our distress level. So, if that day were to ever come, when you entertain this, this would probably be the day. And there's advantages to doing it and not to doing it. Basically, the best rate you can pick is the one that will actually come to pass. So, your guess is as good as mine.
Rick, I guess I, you know, I was, a lot of years in banking, but market, it was in marketing, so I'm not the finance guy. You make a statement in your fourth paragraph in the middle with respect to the assumption and lowering the assumption from seven and three quarters to seven and a half, that the higher the assumption, the lower the required contribution in the short run. And I'm stopping there intentionally because I don't want to go on to the next part if I don't understand the first part.
The assumption?
So, if we were, if we were, if we were to stay at seven and three quarters, let's say, the required contribution in the short say, the required contribution in the short run would be lower?
Yes, correct.
Let me, yeah, let me take a stab at this. So, the, there's, there's two buckets of money in a pension plan. There's the money that the township puts in, and there's the money that it earns on interest.
Okay.
So if we say we're going to earn X number of interest, dollars' worth of interest, then our contributions are lower. But we have to reach that level of, of interest, because if we don't, then the, the actuaries and the state's going to require us to put more contributions in. It's really, you're going to end up in the same place, it's just a matter of delay. So if we lower the, the, the interest rate assumption, our contributions are going to go up. But if we earn more than the seven and a half percent, then in a few years, they'll lower our contributions, because there's, there's an amortized amount. There's either, there's an amortized amount that you have to pay extra if you're underfunded, and then there's a, there's a refund, an amortized refund, that you get back if you're overfunded. So really, this is, just goes back and forth. What we're saying is that over the past, and I think it was included in your packet, there's a couple of tables in there. Those are not for our investments, those are a, a general market picture. Over the past 10 years, for the type of asset mix we have, the return has been, I think it was over 8%. Let me find it. Whereas the, the return over the past five years has been somewhat less than that. It's less than what our assumption is right now.
So, gentlemen, the, and I'm speaking gentleman, okay. The township doesn't get the, doesn't have the, I'm going to say, right, all right, to say, "We want the return to be seven and a half percent, not seven and three quarters." Who determines that?
Well, we, we do. We, we get to determine what our assumption is. Now, remember, this is an assumption. We assume we're going to earn this kind of interest. And as long as we do better than that rate, we're doing great. That means our contributions stay low. If we don't earn that rate, then we have to make it up with contributions.
But who's...
It must be agreed upon by the actuary and the township, is, is the answer to that question. That's what Act 205 says. And, and the, the amount that the taxpayers actually have to put in will be less the closer this number is to what actually comes to pass, which I know is almost, doesn't mean much, because we don't know what's going to come to pass. But if the board thinks that 7.75% is not going to be realized, in the long run, the taxpayer's going to pay less if you reduce it to 7.5%.
Less if we reduce it to 7.5%?
In the long run, yes. If, if we're not going to make 7.75%, and you reduce it to seven point, I mean, if we're not going to make 7.75%, and you reduce it to 7.5%, the taxpayers will pay less in the long run.
What kind of numbers are we talking about in the long run?
Thousands. It's the most important assumption there is. The pension committee did review this, and the pension committee recommended the 7.5%. Now, like I said, the actuary, the pension attorney and staff are perfectly fine with either one of those percentages.
Isn't, is the assumption the same thing as a goal? I mean, our goal is to hit seven and a half. Is we want the fund...
No, I don't think so. I think it's, it's more a matter of what you think will actually come to pass. I mean, yes, obviously, no doubt about it, we'd love to have 7.75% over 7.5. And we could strive for it as a goal, but this is really about what we think's actually going to happen in the future, in the long-term future.
So the board might say, and the actuary, say, "All right, we are going to do whatever we can, whether what we have to put in and what investments will do for us, and seven and a half percent is what we want to see happen. We, we can do that. Am I right?"
Yes.
Sure.
Well, I, I mean, you're looking for, for tonight, you had on the agenda for a discussion and possible action on both A and B. Would, would there be a, a problem if we waited until we had a full...
No, not at all.
...board to discuss this again, and...
No.
Actually, yeah, that's not supposed to say, "Possible action." I'd ask to have that removed, but we missed that.
Okay. I think it's a good idea that we, when we make a decision like this, we should all be...
Yeah, that's fine. No problem.
You're absolutely right. So these will both be agenda items, then, for the next meeting?
Sure. All right.
So we're going to just move on from these. Thank you, Rick, for bringing all that.
If you have any questions in the interim, this, this is really difficult stuff to try to convey.
We, we will.
So, so don't, don't feel bad if you have a question. Like I said, it's, it's very specialized, and it can get kind of complicated. So give me a call or an email.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, then, to number 13 on the agenda is public safety. Director Hall, you're on.
Yeah, thank you. What, the memo that was provided to you basically talks about the 2019 installment invoice for the Alpine Fire Reporting and Response Software. The board will remember that last year, we discussed and decided to move forward with, or the board agreed for us to move forward with the Alpine Fire Reporting Software, which replaces their, their current system, actually incorporates a number of different software products into one. It, it came over a three-year period with annual payments of around, just about $32,000, just shy of that. So that has become due. We received back in June the invoice from Alpine Software. It goes by Red NMX, as its brand name. And we've been working diligently to advance that software. It just recently, about a week or so ago, went live, because there was a lot of configuration that had to be done in the past year. There's been a committee of fire service people and, and our PSOs that have worked on bringing this to fruition. So it's meeting expectations. We have the, the vendors actually working with us very closely to work through some of the, some of the difficulties with it. But I think the memo pretty much explains what it pulls together, and the fire department's using it, as well as an app that they have on their phones, so it's tied into the county. So when a call is received, they get alerted through their phone app, as well as their pager. So this is essentially asking the board, just allow us to move forward with the program and, and authorize the, the payment to the vendor of the 2019 invoice that they, the company submitted.
So this will be part of the next requisitions that we approve? Is that what we're saying?
No, it's in the budget this year.
No, it'll be in the budget, but, you know, we, tonight, for instance, we approved all the bills. You were asking for us to move, to move on this tonight, or is this going to be expens...
Action on the budget of that, budget item of this amount, Tom?
Yeah, generally, we've brought payments of this size before the board, just so you know what's going on. But if you, if you approve us going forward with this, you will see it on a future warrant list, and you'll end up approving it again.
I, I understand. Okay, I see.
I was just trying to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Make a moment, make a motion that we pay the Alpine Fire Reporting Response Software requisition. Is this a requisition? What do we have on our hands here?
It's an invoice.
It's an invoice?
For the...
For $31,322.83.
So, so the motion is to move forward?
It is.
Got it. I have a motion and a second, and Dave, I just have a question. So, down the road, the reoccurring, I mean, what do we anticipate? So we're getting into these programs, okay? And so we have, you know, three years or whatever of thirty-some-odd thousand dollar payments. You know, what do we see as reoccurring costs, I mean, on, on this?
There's a, there is a maintenance fee. Tonight, I can't tell you.
But I mean, like, there's going to be updates and, and stuff.
That's all part of the agreement.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, a set maintenance fee for that software, just like all of our other software products. And all of the updates come as a part of that maintenance.
What, indefinitely?
Yeah, as long as you pay the maintenance, they'll keep doing the updates.
Like, for years to come?
Right, exactly.
And that's all part of the agreement?
Yeah, and if they do, and if they do an improvement to that software of any kind, that, it can be multiple times a year, that comes and is downloaded and becomes part of that product.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, on the question, we have a motion and a second to move forward with payment on the Alpine Fire Reporting and Response Software. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. And then you got another one, Dave?
I do. This is a request to advertise for full-time paramedic. The board will recall that, that last year, we came in and asked for three, as we started the ALS program, three full-time paramedics. And we currently have those three in place. And also, we have eight full-time EMTs in place. But we recently had one of the EMTs leave us, and so that opens up that EMT position. So we are recommending that in order to improve scheduling, because what we found is some difficulty, even though we have a good complement of part-time people, it, it actually bolsters the program to, to have a fourth medic as a, and we don't, I don't want to say we don't need, but we could, we could substitute that medic for that EMT position. So we would not fill the EMT position, we would instead have that fourth paramedic. And there's a list there of the benefits that were behind the request. The differential in the budget, there would be no, no serious impact issue. We will absorb it in this year's budget for, if we did it now, which we'd, we'd like to do, until the end of the year, and then we would come before you with a presentation. And we, we're estimating that there would be a differential of about $6,500 roughly, $6,600 between the pay scales. So that's, it's before you for consideration, and we certainly would, would like to see it, it happen.
Maximum difference, right.
So, yeah.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions on this before we? Because I have a question.
No, go ahead.
So the, the net savings that, you know, or maybe not net savings, but the differential of $6,500 bucks, that's, that would be if we kept the EMT that left on, down, you know, down the road, too, right? Not just for, just this year?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, if we did this, we would not be looking to keep that EMT. We would go down to seven EMTs as the full-time complement.
And you don't foresee us later on saying, "Hey, look, you know, we need to bring an EMT out of field."
Well, I don't want to let the cat out of the ad hoc bag, but, yeah, there, there could be downrange.
Okay.
That, I will tell you, there will be no request in 2020 for any additional EMTs.
You mean, in this, but...
The budget that we, that will be coming before us.
For coming up for 2020, got it.
My personnel memorandum to Director Grove basically was that we are not asking for any additional EMTs. We really want to, we want to get the ALS program sound and moving forward.
So the number of employees that you have is not going to change?
No.
They're going to wear different hats, but they're not going to change?
Correct. And the benefit piece, you know, unless one of those employees is, if, if all of those, if the employees are taking the benefits, then it's the same. If one of them is taking less than it, that's, that's calculated differently. So, and I don't know what that would be, because I don't know who the employee might be. We would be advertising, accepting applications for that position. We do have one part-time employee that may have an interest, but essentially, it's asking the board to allow us to accept applications for that position and move forward.
So, Mr. Manager, when you had made the comment about $6,500 maximum pay, so to speak, there on the differential, I, I mean, that's it, right? I mean, we're, we're figuring all kind, you know, any, there wouldn't be any surprises, right?
Well, I think when Dave, if I'm remembering the, the memo, he was looking at the difference between what we currently, we pay the current EMT who left, and what the maximum pay range for a experienced paramedic would be. So there's a possibility that we, we bring in a paramedic who doesn't have as much experience, we pay them less, because if you remember a meeting or two ago, you looked at that new pay scale for paramedics that was based on years of experience.
Right, right.
So that, that comes into play. So if we hire somebody with loads of experience, then you'll probably be looking at a $6,500 pay difference.
I see.
If we hire somebody with less experience, the pay gap between that and the departed EMT would be smaller.
And, and that's a, that's a salary difference? That doesn't take into account what the overtime budget may be if there's an overtime factor. So that's, that, again, is, is hard to...
But that's accounted for separately anyhow.
Right, it is accounted for separately. This is just salary numbers.
And then, you know, I mean, we're gaining a paramedic.
We are.
Which is...
Right. And it's, with the certifications, a paramedic can all, can always function as an EMT.
Right.
The reverse is not the case.
Right, that's right. I was actually impressed today when I heard some of, you know, again, I keep hearing things from Tony, when he was talking about what the paramedics actually can do.
Right.
Bringing that service, that level of service into the field's incredible. So, so, I mean, I imagine you, you, you may be looking for some action tonight on this?
At the board's discretion, certainly.
Well, commissioners, I mean, what do you think?
I'll make a motion, we advertise and hire a paramedic.
Sir?
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I would, if I, if you don't mind, I would like to add to that motion, the justification being the memo from Director Hall to the board. Is that okay?
Reunter that. So I have a, a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed, motion carries four to oh. Thanks, Dave. Is that it tonight?
Thank you. That is it.
For now?
Thank you.
For now.
For tonight and for now, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Manager, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I only have one bit of business tonight. I put a copy of a, an email that I received from Deborah Baker, Baker Acquisitions. If I remember the last meeting, I had brought forward interest from Baker Acquisitions in picking up a cellular site for Chantel, which is a Sprint affiliate. There, apparently, they, there was just too many hurdles for them to cross, including, you can see there that she didn't like the rent that I was proposing, but also, due, due to the FAA approvals and the zoning that they would need to get, they decided to go seek elsewhere. So the possibility of putting a cell tower up in our Beacon Hill Radar Park is, at least for now, over.
Good.
And that's all I have.
All right. Now we have commissioner reports and...
Aaron, we'll start with you.
BWB is actually at Fontaine and Borders right now. They're starting to cut the insides of the building. So we haven't contacted, like, media, because I think everyone wants the first shot of the outside coming down, and the inside is not that interesting. But they are actually over there working, so stuff is underway.
Is that it? Thank you.
Just, I know Commissioner Shin and Commissioner Vellone were at the, the BIA today, the, the Business and Industry Alliance. The, the little emblem that you saw that was on the agenda was actually designed largely by Diana Nysley. So she, she did, I think, a great job, and it depicts essentially what the whole interest is there, and that's the handshake between the business community and the Department of Public Safety. So I wanted to, you know, give her a shout-out and say how, what a really nice job she did in that design. And it, I think it went very well, and I'd leave that to commissioners who were present to, to talk about that. But it, it was, it was, it was a step forward in, in what we strive to do, and that's creating a better relationship and a positive relationship with the community, and establishing trust as, as much as we possibly can. And I, I certainly think, from my feedback today and talk with some people, that we achieved that, so.
that. So just wanted to mention that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor?
Nothing until executive session, right?
Well, Director Hall did steal a little of my thunder, but it's really his thunder, it's really staff's thunder. The Business and Industry Alliance meeting today was great, and, you know, I think just what we're doing for them as well, bringing those folks together. I made a note of you, of someone who said, you know, you'll be able to share a lot of information you have among each other, not alone. So it's great if we can, you know, when I was a business coach with my brother's company, we talked about strategic alliances, and this business alliance with public and private is great, and I applaud you for, and your staff. And I do have to report, Mr. Manager, a streetlight out on the corner of Plainview and Scarsdale Drives. It's not by my house, but it's close. Thank you, that's all I have.
Is that it? All right. Ted?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
I have nothing.
Nothing further? Yeah. Dan?
I'll give you a quick update on the roundabout projects. At Rossmoyn and Lisburn, the underground drainage work is completed. All those facilities are in. PPL's contractor has been on site for about two weeks. They had the number of poles to put in, new poles are in, and they're moving the facilities from the old poles to the new poles. Contractors got a lot of their layout done in preparation for bringing the curb in, so that'll be starting someday soon. At Arcona and Lisburn, it's actually a little further along, their subsurface drainage work is done. They actually were placing curbs today. They do slipform concrete curbs, so a lot of the curb actually went in today, so it's moving along.
Those turnabouts look scary. We went out the other day, you know, for that meeting, I loved it, I thought, wow, it's going to be amazing.
It's going to be interesting to see how they flow.
Just think counterclockwise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dan, for your hard work on that. Is anybody that's stayed to the bitter end have something? Leon? Coffee with a cop on Thursday, 8:00 to 7:00 Starbucks? Coffee with a cop on Thursday? What time is that? Eight to 10. I haven't been to one of those yet. Anybody else have anything tonight? Thomas, anything? Nothing?
President, we'll need to recess.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah.
Just one other quick thing, and that is the last weekend's closure of eastbound turnpike went very well. They moved that section of the bridge from its build point into place, and the turnpike opened up at 5:20 Monday morning for full traffic. So the next evolution of that is the westbound, which is, will run from 7:00 this Friday evening until, you know, be reopened by 6:00 Monday morning. So we monitored that, the police department helped monitor that, and we had additional EMS crews available, heaven forbid, and we'll plan the same thing. So we're, we are in support of that, but the project went very well.
Okay, cool, thanks. Yeah, it didn't seem like there was too many disruptions with that. The only thing, I had a couple things, I continue on a regular basis to get really positive comments about our public works folks. I mean, people constantly say how, I mean, you know, first of all, they're very friendly, at least they appear to be, when they're out doing their jobs, but that, they seem to be very vigilant, you know, and they, folks will say stuff like, you know, they, you know, I always see those, they usually say guys or whatever, but they always see those guys on the side of the road, you know, grabbing something or that. My wife and I, we were coming down Sheepford, and the, one of our tractors was out, you know, with the brush hog along the side of the road, and it was, of course, blocking Sheepford, there's not a whole lot you can do there. And the guy operating it just, I mean, he did the best he could to just, you know, deal with the traffic and that, and, you know, that's just good. You never get the sense that anybody has a bad attitude, so, and that shows, because I get comments very often about how good our public works folks are, so thanks. The other thing was, is Vicky and I volunteered this weekend over at Lisburn for the day for their gun raffle, and they had a very successful event this year. It was combined with Lower Allen and Lisburn Fire Companies. And I know I sound like I broke a record with this, but man, the, our fire folks in this township, and in this case, it was amazing to see how they could come together. I mean, I've been involved for three years now with the gun raffles over there, and I've seen it, but this year just seemed extraordinary. I mean, they, these folks were like an army of people just helping out, and at the end of the, Vicky and I were handling the dining room, and at the end of the day, we were just exhausted. We've both been, you know, dealing with allergies and stuff, and we were just ragged, had run ragged for the weekend. And at the end of the day, we were like, oh, gosh, we're going to have to clean up the entire dining room, you know, everyone's going to take off. And it wasn't that at all. They all came out of the kitchen, and they all just teamed up, and, I mean, they had everything taken care of so quick, but I think it was a huge success. I think they made a lot of money between them to split. So kudos to our fire folks, both the firemen and the auxiliary and social members in both fire companies. God bless them, they just, they worked their tails off, so. Anyway, that's all I had. We are going to recess, not adjourn, because I imagine we have to come back, right, Steve, for something? Okay, so we're going to be taking action after our executive session, so we're going to recess to executive session. Reconvene our meeting tonight. I believe we have a motion potentially on the floor.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make the motion to terminate the employment of Ashley Beischlein effective September 11, 2019.
Second. So I have a motion and a second on the floor regarding the issue. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to oh. I just would like to make, for point of reference tonight, I don't know if I brought this up, I've been thinking about it. President Black was not here this evening with excuse. Yes. So if you can make sure that gets into the minutes, that would be terrific. Other than that, I declare this meeting adjourned.
Good meeting, Mr. Vice President.
I'm surprised.